We're ready to go. I just wanted to announce that we're moving the agenda item number seven, the Post Plan. We're moving that up first because some people have to leave. So we'll start with agenda item number seven and make that number one.
Can I call Connie?
Yes, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you. We'll get started.
Good morning, Mayor, well, City Council, not Mayor. Ann Butler, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm joined at the table with Jim Inglesy from Planning, and this is Brian Trustee from Proz Consulting. Before we get started, I just wanted to say that we're really excited to be here today. This has been a long process. This is really the first master plan that the city's ever had in our department, so it's a pretty big deal. And I also wanted to thank Jim. Without his help, we would not be here today. If you didn't notice, we had a lot of projects this last year, and without his help, we just would not have been able to get this project done. So, thank you, Jim, for helping with the public comment and the process and everything that you've done. So, thank you. Okay, Brian?
Thanks, Ann. So, thank you all. Good morning, members of the council. My name is Brian Trustee. I'm a Principal of Proz Consulting. I've been the primary project manager on this project since it began, which is about 13 months ago. Really happy to share with you a lot of the highlights of the process, as well as the findings and the recommendations of this report. And as Ann mentioned, this is the first of its kind for the city of Pocatello, having an actual formal Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan. So first and foremost, one of the things that we really wanted to do throughout the entire process is make sure that we aligned well to the city's 2040 comprehensive plan. So, all of the major elements and key aspects of the comprehensive plan, we wanted to make sure that we intersected this Post Plan with well. So, obviously, there's great touchpoints with being outdoor oriented, but also, the city's Parks and Recreation System contributes to its economic viability and its robustness, certainly its environmental resiliency, its connectivity. As you can see, the Parks and Recreation Team operates highly in the spirit of partnership and cooperation, not only with other city departments, but other stakeholders within the community. It enriches our neighborhoods. It brings out the creativity in our community, and overall, it represents a lot of what the city of Pocatello stands for. So, what were some of our desired outcomes in this process? Well, at the beginning, the bedrock of this is that it needed to be a process that was built and baked in robust, accessible, inclusive, public and community engagement. So, we had, as you'll see later on in this presentation, we had multiple forms of community engagement that even from the very beginning with leadership stakeholder interviews and focus groups, we had an opportunity to meet with each of you at one point or another, sometimes more than once. We met with key partners and key players in the community. We met with regional partners as well. So even City of Chubak had people that came down to participate in a focus group at one time. We had multiple public meetings, and we also had a statistically valid survey. So, we'll talk a little bit about community engagement a little bit further in this presentation. We needed to craft a strategy for Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails here in Pocatello that was equitable to the entire community, that utilized a variety of data sources and best practices, not only from here within the region, but also with the state of Idaho and nationally. We needed to recognize and acknowledge that the Parks and Recreation System, especially with the inclusion of the open space system, it really is the vast majority of the green infrastructure here within the city of Pocatello. And so how we manage the Parks and Recreation System and the open space very much is about how we manage the environmental resiliency of the city. And so acknowledging that in the plan, really helping to shape an organization as a department that's financially resilient and reflective of the organizational best practices around the country, and developing an action plan and a series of recommendations that's both realistic, but also has the right level of ambition, so to keep our eyes on the horizon. So this process really ran through three major phases. The first phase was really understanding where we are today, understanding the system as it exists today, so looking at the programs that you also are offering. Our partner, Logan Simpson, on this project did a park-by-park assessment, and a lot of those detailed findings are also in the report, and led to the development of the recommendations. That led us to the second phase, which is really more that ideation phase. Where are we going tomorrow? And then that third phase was how are we going to get there, and a lot of the implementation aspects that you'll see in the plan. So we do have a final draft, and that's what we're here to talk about today. The staff have gone through and reviewed this draft and provided several really great refinements to that process. We've also shared it and presented it and got the feedback from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We had our third and final public meeting alongside that back in February, and then that led us to a final version of the plan that went out for public comment for 30 days. So we were able to get a lot of that feedback also from the community at large, and then really today is about seeking your questions and discussion around the current draft. So what does this plan entail? Basically, this is a quick rundown of essentially what's in the table of contents, but what's more important is that I wanted to kind of highlight with the image on the right, and that is that there's these key issues that really this plan is focused around. One is addressing aging infrastructure. So you have wonderful parks, they're well located in the community. There are also, a lot of the amenities and the infrastructure in the parks are a little bit tired, and they are heavily, heavily used. And so systematically thinking about a phased approach to how you can address aging infrastructure over time is one of the key themes that came out in this process. Secondly, even though you have a significant amount of trails and connectivity here, not only within the city, but immediately adjacent to the city, there's still a very strong desire to see even more trails and connectivity. Trails and access and use of trails and open space, I've learned in this process, is very much part of the DNA of what it means to be a resident in Pocatello. And so it's not unexpected to see trails continuing to be a major priority here. You have a very robust set of recreational programs, but you also have an increasingly diversifying community, and so these programs are working to stay abreast and aligned with the needs of a diverse community. You also, this is a department, the word that I would use to describe it, and hopefully she won't take offense, is scrappy, because they are operating under limited budget and staffing, but they do a lot with what they have to work with. And that was also an issue that we really looked at. And then finally, around the importance of partnerships and creative funding. There were some ideas that we'll talk about here in a minute that came out of this process that are great ideas, and they're good fit here, such as an additional indoor recreation facility or indoor aquatics facilities. But these are very expensive. They are very expensive to build, they're very expensive to operate. And so while we did acknowledge that they came up in the process, because they deserve to be acknowledged for that reason, we also laid out in the plan, these are facilities that we don't see possible for the city until there's creative partnerships and funding opportunities that will actually make that happen. So it was very important to us as a planning team to be providing you also responsible recommendations that were not way outside of your means. So I did mention community engagement. There's a variety of ways in which we did that here, noted on the slide. So we did have a number of stakeholder interviews and focus groups that, a lot of them happened in the beginning of the process, but honestly, they also happened throughout the process. We were still having these types of conversations at the 11th and 12th month mark of the planning. We had three public meetings. We had one at the very beginning of the process. We had one about in the middle where we were able to share what we had learned so far and survey results. And then we had one just recently, which we were rolling out this very same presentation that you're seeing today. I will tell you that each one of those public meetings were very well attended. I do public meetings all over the country, and you never know, you know, once two, or five, or 35, or 55 are going to show up, and every time, we filled this room pretty well. And they asked really great questions, and so you have a very engaged community around this process. We did do a statistically valid survey. You'll see some very brief highlights of the results of that. That in itself is over a 200-page report that you can, I think it actually has been shared with all of you at one point or another when Jim was setting up those one-on-one interviews that I had with each of you. Very insightful. And the results of a statistically valid survey are good for a good five years or so. So if you have other initiatives that might be looking for the data that comes out of that survey, those survey results are still very good until about five years. We did online, we had a social pinpoint website, so we had a project website still up, and we can keep it up for as long as we need to, where we featured parts of the process that were happening. We also, but most importantly, we had an online survey. We got a lot of feedback through the online survey, as well as a mapping exercise where people could go in and put specific comments on a map about very specific parks or trails or areas of open space. So a big range, a very robust set of opportunities to get engaged in the process for the community. So here's a few things that we learned in this process, some headlines. One, your parks are very well maintained and clean, but as I mentioned before, they are tired and in need of refreshment. This is a process that's already beginning. I mean, it was interesting as a planning team because Ann already mentioned the number of projects they've had over the last year, and the talent of folks like Hannah, and being able to get grants in the door. It was a little bit of a challenge for us as a planning team to keep up with what the department was doing over the course of this last year, because they were doing so much already. And so this is a process that's already begun. Connectivity, as I mentioned, a huge priority. Operational capital funding is a challenge, so we need to keep that in mind. There is a potential for new facilities, but they will require partnerships and creative funding options. Outdoor recreation, the Community Rec Center and team sport programs are very, very popular here. I know you've had an opportunity to cut the ribbon on a renovation at the Community Rec Center over the course of this planning process, too. It's a gorgeous facility. I'm really complimentary of the way which you've worked within that footprint. And then, of course, what we also heard loud and clear from the community was fixing what we already have, taking care of what we already have is the most important priority. So these are some highlighted results from the statistically valid survey. This may be a little difficult to read, I apologize for that, but we asked a series of questions on the survey, such as, do you or any member of your household have a need for these types of facilities or these types of programs? How well is your need being met or not being met? And so those types of questions, we cross-tabulate the results of those to create what we call a priority investment rating. So this is the results of that priority investment rating exercise for facilities. You can see the highest priority facilities were multi-use paved trail, indoor aquatic center, restrooms, multi-use unpaved trail, small neighborhood parks, outdoor pools, water parks, indoor walking and jogging track, and access to water. Now, one thing that I always want to mention and add is caution on a list like this, and there's another slide later that looks at some additional prioritization of facilities that took this information in the beginning, but also added in some of the other feedback that we were receiving. This is not what we call a sequential list for development. This is not something where we recommend, oh, we only get to low priority after we've done all the high and medium priority. This is just one lens to look through. As you think about expanding the park system or refreshing parks, it's one important data point about what's important to the community, and so not to be looked at in isolation. This is a similar result for programming. So our highest priority programming being outdoor rec programs, not surprising here in Pocatello, adult fitness and wellness, recreational swim, outdoor environmental and nature camps, adult performing arts, pickleball, that's not surprising anywhere in the United States right now, swim lessons, water fitness, lap swimming, the East Fork, Meek Creek Nordic Area Programming, senior fitness and wellness, lap swim, and youth sports leagues, rounded out the high priority items. I don't think any one of those would probably be a surprise to you. This is one of my favorite questions on the survey, which is if we gave you $100, how would you allocate it across a variety of priorities? And I'd like to draw your attention to the upper right. The highest priority, the highest priority that people responded to was improvement and maintenance of existing parks and recreation facilities. Taking care of what we already have is their first priority for spending funding. Second was developing of new trails and open spaces, also not surprising. Third was development of indoor recreation facilities, followed by renovation and improvement of the city of Pocatello outdoor pools, which you already got some progress on this year with the new slide out at Ross Park, followed by development of new parks, development of new programs and events, and finally, development of new athletic facilities. This is the types of support for various improvements that they wanted to see. So our highest areas, we asked them, very supportive, somewhat supportive, not sure, or not supportive at all. The things that received the highest level of support were adding shade and trees to parks. There's something about trees coming up also later in this presentation we should be thinking about. Improving existing restrooms, improving existing parks overall, developing additional trails and connectivity, and improving the existing trail system was the top five. It is also not uncommon that trails and restrooms are usually two of the top things we hear about in park plans like this. They are very important aspects to our parks systems. So now we're looking at some of the analysis we did and the recreation programs themselves. So we looked at all your programs overall, and this is the various age segments that are served by your programs. What's nice to see here is that all your age segments in the community are covered. There's no age segment that's being left out of recreational programming, and in a lot of cases, there are areas of programming that are addressing and meeting the needs of multiple age segments. So that's something that's very, very important. Oh, as a point of note, the P in this graph is primary, so the primary market, and the S is secondary market. We also looked at your programs as to where they were in their life cycle. So of all, of every single individual program in the portfolio, is it brand-new? Has it been out for a season or two and still growing? Has it been out for a while and just staying steady? Or is it in a state of decline or saturation? And I draw your attention to the numbers on the right side where it says actual programs' distribution. 52% of your total programs are in those introductory phases. We recommend 50 to 60% of your portfolio be there, so from a national best practice perspective, you're very good on the proportion of programs that are in that new phase. That means your recreational programming team is doing a good job of staying aligned with community needs and churning out new programs as needed. 31% are in that mature phase. Again, that's well within or below what we would recommend, we recommend no more than 40% of your portfolio in that phase. But this next one is something that really started to draw our attention. 17% of the programs were found to be in that kind of declining or saturation phase, and we recommend no more than 10%. I mean, that's not terribly alarming, but what that does is that's helpful for your recreation programming team to know, as they want to evolve the recreation programming portfolio overall, really focusing on those programs that are struggling with participation is where we should begin.
We got a question.
Did you have a question?
Sure. So what programs fit into that third category? Just an example.
Those would be programs, so they range the gambit from the various program areas such as youth or adult sports or athletics, but the individual programs that were within those, we have those, I don't have them off the top of my head, but they were programs that were struggling with participation levels. So every time that they may be offered, either they run the risk of being canceled because not sufficient folks are signing up for them, or...
I can give an example. For example, flag football, we've run with our youth program for third and fourth graders. As Friday night, flag football came into the area, they've not only gotten younger, but they've provided a different offering, different times, different, you know, it's NFL-themed teams, things like that. And so as we saw our numbers declining, which also tackle football, started to get younger, so it was depleting the age group that we were using to the point where we just went, you know what, we're going to let somebody else do this. And so it's kind of faded away just in the last two or three years.
Got it. Thank you.
That's a great example.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could tag on that. Do you see the decline in the local programs? Are those, what's the word I'm looking for? Do you see the same thing in other communities? Or is there a differentiation because of our four-season climate?
No. It's, I mean, I was just doing this very same presentation for another client earlier this week in central Texas, and they had the same issue. In fact, the proportion of their programming that were in that saturated and declining phase was over 20%. And a lot of that has to do with just changing dynamics in a community like Ann was referencing, and the timing it takes for programming staff to catch up with, you know what, we shouldn't be offering this program anymore because no one's signing up for it, or we're directly competing with something else that's happening in the community. So it's not uncommon to see this type of result. I think it's just helpful for folks like Ann and her team as they think about, how do we focus on maybe quality over quantity when it comes to our programming? Where do we start to look to trim the rose bush a little bit? And these programs, the ones that have struggling participation, is where you should start to look.
Sometimes it's infrastructure, you know? For example, pickleball, we really can't, we could not program pickleball, we didn't have a place for them to play. Where now we can look at that and say, is this an avenue we want to go down? Just because there just wasn't a facility or a space for them.
And I want to make sure we're not saying the wrong thing here. You do not have declining participation in recreation programs. You have a very popular recreation program portfolio. Of all the programs that you provide, 17% of them are struggling a little bit, but overall, your recreation programs are extremely popular, and some of them in particular fill up like that. So it's, overall, you do not have declining participation.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up? I guess what I'm asking is, is there a specific list of those programs that are in decline, and does that list correspond with what is being seen nationwide?
Oh, yes, there is a specific list. We do have those results. Yes and no, because every community is different. I wouldn't say I saw anything that was particularly outstanding.
I think you, for example, adult softball. You see some peaks and valleys and some trends. You know, for example, there was a group that were my age that were playing, and as you reach a certain number, that starts to fall off, and you have to gain some more people interested in that. And sometimes it's not at 18, it's at 25, when they go, I want to start playing again. So there are, we've seen some kind of peaks and valleys in adult softball as an example.
Adult sports overall, that is a common issue of declining participation, just because almost in every case, you know, the community may come to the Parks Department and say, we really want some adult sports leagues, and then they organize those leagues, and then nobody signs up for them. Because, you know, when we ask people, what are the barriers to you participating in programming or going to parks more often? Almost always, lack of time is number one, two, or three. And so, especially in us in our adult lives, that is a common one.
And as you get more teams, then you have to add an earlier game time, and the earlier game time isn't really efficient for those that are working. You know, that five o'clock game time now doesn't work where it used to be six, seven, and eight, and people like that. They also don't like the late game time. So 10:30, you know, I don't want to play that either. So then you lose a little bit of numbers again, and it just kind of trends up and down.
Thank you.
Council President?
I remember during COVID, we had a lot of discussion about outdoor recreation because it was something people could safely do or participate in. And we saw some changes in what people chose to participate in, and maybe things became more popular and other things became less popular. And I was just curious if the plan and all the data that you've collected and looked at has shown that kind of shift and what we have shifted to? I know golf was one thing that we couldn't get young people to play golf, and now they want to.
Yeah, so this plan really identifies kind of where you are today, and where you are today represents kind of where you have evolved since COVID, because at this point, it's been five years. And so there were some recreational trends that changed, and we saw, I would imagine, park systems like yours that are really heavy on open space saw open space visitation and trail usage explode during COVID, because your colleagues at the state parks level, they saw huge increases in visitation during COVID. We saw huge, large increases in participation in things like golf, which golf was kind of really in decline, but COVID brought it back. Same with tennis, disc golf, any of these outdoor activities that didn't involve a bunch of people standing in close proximity to each other became very popular during COVID, and I think we saw those same trends here.
Will our trail use, I mean, maybe will is not the right word, has it stayed high?
Well, we did not do an evaluation of trail use in this study, but Ann may be able to speak to that from more an anecdotal perspective.
I don't have any research on that. I mean, we could talk about it and take a look at numbers.
I was just curious, in terms of what we're looking at, you know, like adding trails, is that because we're seeing a sustained higher use, or it just, those are what people want anyway?
But I know interest is, sustained high interest in trails exists.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Mansfield?
Yeah, I work adjacent to an outdoor sports industry as well, and the disc golf industry. And what we saw during COVID that was kind of mirrored in other outdoor sports industries was a jump up to, you know, anywhere from 30 to 50% during the time of COVID. And then what happened is that level kind of stayed flat, and the normal growth pattern is almost caught up to where it would have been. So outdoor sports has been kind of growing in popularity and has been sustainably for decades. What happened is, you know, you had the growth, it spiked, and then it kind of leveled off, and we're just now about reaching where it would be anyways without the COVID boom. And so there was that sustained interest, and then it kind of flattened for a while. And then, you know, the question is now is like, does it continue at that level? Does it return back to its previous growth patterns? And that's kind of what the industry's looking at in terms of outdoor recreation, especially like investment money on that.
Right. How that affects our needs.
Right.
Councilmember Nichols?
So do we have any programs that are declining, but only because we don't have the facilities, or say because our facilities might be a little bit scrappy or unappealing?
I would say tennis would be an avenue that we once had some programming that we really can't provide now. I think there are some programs you would see some increases if the facilities saw some improvements, and we saw that in the rec center drastically. I think you would see that with the golf clubhouse. I think skate parks, for example, that was not something we were really looking to program at all. With the new skate park under construction, we probably will look to do some, at least outsource subcontracting there and have some programs that we offer to teach kids to ride. I think it's probably a normal progression in a city our size is to, you know, always have some wants that are there that we're working on.
Right, got it. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The last thing on this slide before we move on is that table at the bottom, which is around program classification. So there's three different classifications of programming. Those that are essential programs, those are, all the classifications are closely aligned to mission, but it's how close they are to your core public mandate as a public service. So essential programs are those that you must do as a public parks and recreation system. These are programs that are most closely linked to your public mandate. They are generally programs that are free or very low cost to the public. So examples could include things like swimming lessons, because that's something that's very important, providing broad community benefit. It's a health and safety issue. Important programs are those that have a blend of providing benefit to the individual participating in it, as well as a broad community benefit. A good example of those are things like youth sports leagues. So it's very good for us to get our youth out and active and healthy and exposing them to good sports and recreation opportunities, so that's a broad community benefit, but it also has a very strong individual benefit to the participants and their families. And then value-added programs are the nice-to-have programs that generally are the least subsidized. So the cost to the user is usually closer to the actual cost of providing the program. They're nice-to-have programs. Examples of that might be something like senior trip and travel programs. What we saw here was the distribution across all those three classifications was very balanced and very strong. So I have been in cases in projects where the percentage of programs that were in the essential category were less than 20%, and they were very high on value added. In those cases, I had to counsel a client, they probably weren't doing enough of the essential-type services, and they needed to be thinking about that. That is not the case here. You have a very balanced portfolio. This next slide is actually looking at the variety of marketing and community This next slide is actually looking at the variety of marketing and communication strategies that you use. As you can see, you act, your team, your parks and recreation team uses a, a number of different part of marketing communication techniques in order to get the word out into the community about what's available for programming or for parks or special events that are coming up. All right, now we're pivoting away from programs and starting to look at site and facility assessments. I'm not going to go into a terrible level of detail here. I'm going to hit kind of a very high level. The overall general recommendations from the assessments were needing to really look at accessibility upgrades, whether it be through walkways, surfacing, you know, you have a great inclusive playground. Um, but as you are moving through the process of updating or replacing existing playground equipment, thinking about more modernized, inclusively designed playground equipment should be prioritized. That was hitting again, the importance of that capital replacement of aging facilities over time. The landscape variety, I, I forecasted I would come back to this. So one thing that our planning team noticed in moving through all the parks is many of the trees are all of the same age. And so thinking about a thoughtful and phased tree canopy program that addresses tree replacement is going to help you not get to a position where through disease or storm or weather, you may end up having a, a major issue with your tree canopy because it's not diversified. Uh, connecting greenway segments, hiking and biking only trails, and expanding open space, even though you have so much of it already, the community is something that, uh, this is something that's very important to them. Here's a series of, uh, maps that are included in the plan itself. This first one that we shared is looking at walkability. So what you're seeing is, um, on the, on the slide, uh, the, kind of the, that pinkish area is a, is with a quarter mile within every park. And the yellow area out beyond that is within a 10-minute wa- uh, excuse me, half-mile walk or 10-minute walk. Um, and so that's one of the things that's important right now in the parks and recreation industry nationally, especially for urban or municipal park systems, is striving to have a park within 10 minutes' walk of, of most, most neighborhoods, most parts of the community. You can see there's, you can start to see where there's a little bit of gaps in 10-minute walkability here. Uh, this is going to translate into a map you'll see in a minute that maybe highlights areas if you were going to be looking at additional parklands, areas that may be, you may want to prioritize based on level of service. So this, uh, looks, this map on the left is trail walkability. The map on the right is open space walkability. Not surprising, particularly on open space, all that walkability is around the rent, the, uh, the fringes of the community because that's where the majority of the open space is located. Similarly with trails, but you do have trails within the community itself, the greatest walkability to them being in the central and south, southern parts of the city. So this is the inverse of those maps. So based on walkability and where you have existing facilities, the areas shaded in blue really kind of are, are what you would call gaps in potential service. So whether they be through partnerships with developers building new residential neighborhoods or an opportunity to acquire parcels for the possibility of turning into a new park, whether it be a neighborhood or a community park, these areas of, of the community are where we would recommend prioritizing your focus because of the current level of service or need for improving level of service. One of the things that Anne and her team asked for is in the scope of work initially when we responded to this, um, opportunity was, uh, basically design standards for both parks and trails. So this plan does include that. So we, we looked at, uh, what the, the, the design standards for paved, shared-use paths, soft surface trails, neighborhood trails, and all of that is provided in the plan. So that's a guide, a guide for new trail development or trail refreshment. And we did the same type of work for each level of park. So here's, you know, here's the regional parks. So these are parks that have the highest, uh, degree of level of service. They are usually regional assets, not just so serving your residents. And this is what typically would be included within a regional park. We had the same thing for a community park. So you have a number of community parks. These are well-loved, uh, throughout the community. And this is what would typically be included within a community park conceptual design. Similar with neighborhood parks and then also with pocket parks. And I know pocket parks have a special place in a few of y'all's hearts, but, um, and that we did, it is something that we looked at. We, we do recognize and understand that the maintenance of pocket parks can be challenging because you have to deploy a maintenance crew to go mow a, a quarter of an acre. Uh, so thinking about how your, your pocket parks are also thoughtfully activated with amenities, so they're more than just a patch of grass you have to mow, but they actually are providing some other value or asset to the community that'd be important.
I think design standards is a place that we can implement with planning and work together in kind of the things that they're seeing in our neighborhoods in addition to how we're designing them within.
Yep. Okay, so I did mention in a minute.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Design standards, okay. When a developer comes in, wants to put in a new development, there are certain requirements around infrastructure that they have to include, um, right, in order to, to do so. Are parks a part of that?
Not currently, no. It's not required.
Is that a thing that some communities do?
Oh, yes. There, and we do, we do talk about that in some of the recommendations.
Okay.
Um, because there, you know, every community, every state is different. Um, you know, for a long time, the state of Idaho overall was not real supportive of things like developer impact fees or developer, uh, land dedication ordinances because they felt like that was too onerous to the development community. But there are communities, and I think it's happening here in Pocatello as well, where you're starting to really think about that. So that when a developer comes in and builds a new neighborhood, part of their responsibility is also either, uh, providing impact fees for the creation of a new park that serves those new residents or creating that park themselves.
Councilmember Nichols.
So is there any type of a general standard, um, as far as how many, say, of acres per thousand people in a community is appropriate? And if so, we're sort of, where do we stand in that metric?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that's called level of service. And we ran level of service analysis on a number of things. So number of acres of parkland per thousand residents. And then we even looked at numbers of acres of different types of parklands. So regional parks, community parks, neighborhood parks, pocket parks, um, amount of acres of open space or miles of trails per thousand. And then we even looked at numbers of playgrounds per thousand, number of sports fields. Overall, you are very healthy. You are not, you are not deprived of parkland or especially open-spaceland, which is very interesting. We, when we did benchmarking, so we did look, we did do a benchmarking exercise also where we looked at a number of other communities, uh, both here in Idaho. We also included Missoula, Montana. Um, you were blowing them out of the water when it came to open space and trails. So, um, you, yeah, you, from a national standpoint, you are very healthy when it comes to land inventory.
So if we, uh, are low on any particular area, where would that be?
I think it's probably more in, uh, potential neighborhood parks, especially as you have areas of the community that are starting to grow either in density or with new residential areas. I think you have very, you're pretty strong on community and regional parks. Uh, it's those clo- parks that are closer to where I live that I may access on a more daily basis that I think it'd be where I would prioritize.
We kind of have an outlier on, uh, we pick up a lot of stormwater and gullies because we're in the valley. So we're picking up a lot of places that aren't traditionally known as a park. Um, but they do have, they might have a trail system in them or something like that, but they still take some maintenance from us. And so as you add lots of acres on stormwater or gullies, it does create some other issues.
Got it. All right, thank you. And in winter months, those become sledding areas.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's right. Okay, so I mentioned before, what you, what we were looking at was prioritization that came out of the survey. But the survey was just one thing that we did, right? We also had community meetings, we had stakeholder interviews. And so we have a prioritization process that begins with the survey results and waits the survey results the highest, but also takes into account what we heard through all the qualitative input and also takes into account the preferences and the expertise of staff and us as a planning team. So it combines it through a weighted process, and this was the result of that. So this is also featured in the plan. But again, nothing really surprising, but after, if you combine all of the input, including staff and the consultant team, multi-use paved trails, restrooms, unpaved trails, indoor walking jogging track and water access were your top five priorities. Again, not a sequential list of development, just a lens to look at as you think about updating parks or if you build new parks, what might go into them. All right, so there are a whole host of recommendations. I'm going to hit, uh, some highlights of them and then we'll open up for further questions and discussions. One, we also, we do recommend that you develop a comprehensive trails plan, which is kind of also a little bit in the works. Uh, but, you know, something that's really a, a sibling to this plan, but exclusively focused on trails because it is such a major enterprise here, um, trail development and trail use. We developed a series of system-wide recommendations, looking at funding options and alternative funding strategies, accessibility and inclusive design, facility and amenity replacement, then planning for a new indoor facility. Uh, so for example, I mentioned we heard about, uh, new indoor facilities being something the public wants. Before we jump in both feet with something like that, looking more deeply at a feasibility study or something along those lines in the next few years wouldn't be a bad idea. Uh, the tree canopy and landscape management we mentioned and upgrades to the golf course. And then we had very specific recommendations across a number of categories. We had 21 different recommendations on, uh, open space, including improving access to the Portnife River. Uh, being able to ac- access and activate the river more thoughtfully as a recreational resource in town is a great opportunity. That is a trend we're seeing across the country. And when you got a river that runs through it, you, you might as well, um, use it for its recreational value and not just, uh, protect yourself from it. We had 24 separate and individual recommendations on a park-by-park basis, or 24 on trail basis, 72 different recommendations on parks. Then we had code recommendations around land use, land development and dedication, uh, process recommendations. And then we had a whole series of recommendations from an operational perspective, building on the strengths of your current team, addressing infrastructure issues and staffing needs. All of this led to a strategic implementation plan that's focused on five major pillars. I'm not going to read these slides to you. But one is around revitalization and maintenance of your neighborhood parks, enhancing and upgrading your community and regional parks, trails and connectivity, growing the system to meet community needs, and organizational excellence. And with that, we'll wrap up and see if you have any general questions and discussion. But now, if you have not had a chance to read the plan itself, you know exactly what's in it. I'll tell you, the plan is really uniquely organized because it's, it actually, we were following the guidance of staff. It was great. Has, you have a very strong executive summary in the beginning, and then it starts with recommendations. And then, uh, after the recommendations, it has a lot of the analysis behind it. So with that, I'll pause and see if anyone has any further questions or comment.
Councilmember Chitam, council president Lyric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the surveys that were taken, when was that done?
Great question. So the online surveys actually began last February and they ran through about August.
So that's a little over a year ago, February of '24.
February of '24 to August of '24.
Okay.
That was the online survey. The statistically valid survey occurred between April, May, and June of last year.
Were, were the, the inputs unique individuals or would someone have a chance to salt the wound a little?
Well, with the, uh, they were all unique. I mean, with, with statistically valid survey, the, the company that we partner with, ETC Institute, is very good. So there's no way to pollute the sample on the statistically valid survey at all. And that's why we always give that the highest weight because it, it's, it can't be polluted. It is the most representative sample of the community at large. Um, and we did validate and verify, based on the respondents and their demographics as they, uh, the demographic identifiers at the end of the survey, to make sure that the demographics and the distribution of the survey respondents were, uh, well-matched with the actual demographics of, of the city of Pocatello. The online survey, yes, it's possible. You can't go in and answer it more than once from a, a single URL, but you can certainly garner your friends and neighbors to go in and, and be a loud voice around a certain interest area. Um, and we, I didn't, we didn't really see any results in the online survey that indicated that was happening, uh, but that, that can happen. But that's why we, the online survey is not nearly as weighted as important to us as the statistically valid one.
One more, Mr. Mayor. Do the existing facilities in the community that are not in the city control, not, not controlled by Anne and her department, do they fill some of the need for additional facilities? You know, I understand this is a snapshot in time, but yesterday we broke ground for a new facility at the MEK that'll provide some indoor recreation. ISU's reopened their pool that's been closed for several years, and there's been a great demand for indoor water. Um, there, there's a tennis facility out south of town at the country club. Do those somehow figure into this or are those separate?
No, we do take that into account. So, uh, for example, most middle and elementary schools have a playground associated with them that may, may be on school grounds, but on evenings and weekends is available for public use. And so we do count, we call those school parks. We do include tho- consideration of those in the inventory. Because you're exactly right. The city's system is one part of a larger ecosystem of facilities in the community that meet parks and recreation needs. It's not common that university facilities are really highly accessible to the public, but in some cases they are. You do have some ISU facilities that are well-loved parks in town. Uh, so we, and we actually included them on the inventory with a little asterisk that it was a ISU facility. So yes, that is, in sometime, in some cases, you have county facilities, you don't have those here. But yes, you are a part of a larger network. We did take that into account.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Council president Lyric, then councilmember Nichols.
Um, I just wanted to ask about the, the plan in relationship to the comp plan, the comprehensive plan. I know one of the main goals, and, and you and I talked about this in our conversation quite a bit. Um, and I, I'm wondering with the final draft, how you feel we manage to, um, get it in line with our comprehensive plan? You feel good about?
Sure, I can start and Anne or Jim may have some, may be able to add to that. So that's why we started this presentation with the reminder that we wanted to stay true to values and the key aspects of the comp plan. In many ways, the comp plan flies at about 60,000 feet, and this plan is where parks and recreation, open space and trails touches down. And so I feel very confident that we followed all the values and we touched on all the core aspects of the comp plan as it pertains to how parks, recreation, open space, and trails can contribute to that. But...
I think that was the goal, is to make sure that this plan did not contradict or do something that was different than where we were headed with the comp plan, which was also part of the inclusion between the two departments, is to make sure that we did this correctly.
And the, um, data that you gathered, the input that you gathered, did you find that it really was in line with all the input that you gathered when you were working on the comp plan?
Yeah, I believe so. The comp plan is more general when we got input. Um, and so this provided more insight on exactly what types of amenities and what programs people were interested in. The comp plan really, uh, told us that people love trails and open space and, and the park system, but not those details that we've, that we got from this one. But that, that's, that's pretty natural of having comprehensive plans being very general and then these area-specific or subject-specific plans be more detailed on. Well, what does that mean in, in detail?
But I was glad to hear that it, it fit together and that it backed up everything that you found out. It is more detailed, but it fits within what we learned in producing the comp plan, too.
Okay, good, thanks.
Councilmember Nichols, then councilmember Paulson.
You've used the term statistically valid survey. What does that mean?
What that means is, first, it means a couple of things, but the most important is that it's a complete random sample. Uh, so it's not something where I can self-select to take the survey, right? Uh, so in order to get a statistically valid, random sample of the city of Pocatello's residents, uh, based on your population size... based on your population size, we needed to have a little, almost 400 completed surveys back. In order to do that, the survey company hardmails several thousand surveys out to the community and then follows up with that to give them alternative ways to be able to fill, complete those, either mail them in, even, they didn't give folks the opportunity to complete them over the phone if they want. But that is a complete random sample. They monitor the respondents to ensure that they are, like I mentioned, the demographics of the respondents are reflective of the demographics of the community and no one part of the community is being oversampled or undersampled.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yeah, nothing really substantive, because I don't know how many times I've seen this now, but I just want to say, thank you.
You're welcome.
Like, yeah, Parks and Rec was my number one pick for board assignments, and yeah, I'm really excited about this, so thank you.
And you've been steady at participating in all those things all along the way.
Any other questions, council? Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
As I'm closing out, can I add one thing, Mayor?
Sure.
I really want to commend your staff. It was a real joy working with them over the course of this last year. You have a great team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
We are going to take a few minute breaks, a few minutes for a break so that I can kind of get caught up to where we are and then we'll be back. Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning after our break. Council, one thing, agenda item number five has been pulled from the agenda. The fire union is traveling right now. They may be picking up one of the fire apparatuses we've purchased. But I don't know that, so don't get excited about it. I was just thinking, why would they all be traveling, but that could be why.
Too late, you already got us excited.
I know, I got you excited. Sorry about that. We'll move to agenda item two now, is the Construction Board of Appeals and Review update. Representatives from the Construction Board of Appeals and Review will be in attendance to discuss the board's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come talk to you. Richard Bigelow, building official for the city of Pocatello. Just here for the Construction Board of Reviews and Appeals. It's a very important board that I'm happy to say we don't meet that often. The purpose behind the Construction Board of Appeal is if a builder or homeowner doesn't agree with a code decision that's been made, that's their process. They appeal to this board that's made up of industry professionals to hear the appeal to make sure that the code decision was followed correctly. The board doesn't have the authority to waive code requirements. Their purpose is just to verify that the inspectors and myself are following the intent of the building codes. So it's very honoring and a goal of ours to not have to meet. Since I've been building official for the city just almost six years now, we've only met twice, once over a fence and once over a business that's no longer in place in Station Square. So that is our goal. We work very well with the builders in our city. We are a member of the Builders Association. We go to their meetings, we go to their events and we work well. We have open dialogue with our builders and I take great pride that we're able, even though we're in an enforcement position, to, when we don't see eye to eye, to find mutual ground and meet the intent of the building code.
Thank you. Councilmember Cheetham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What authority then does this group have to follow our codes?
So all they do is, when they meet, is they just sit there and they hear and then they view if we did uphold the code. If you remember, a couple of months ago, the council heard from Portnife Valley Soccer on using porta-potties instead of restrooms. The reason why we didn't meet over that is because we didn't have the authority to meet their ask. Their ask was to waive code requirements and not putting in many as bathroom fixtures as it was to using porta-potties. Because we don't have that authority to waive that code, only the council does.
Any other questions? It looks like we've got to Council President Lyric and then Councilmember Nichols.
I was just wondering about the makeup of the board, who serves on it and the knowledge they have of codes. Like, how do we select?
So we advertise architects. We have former building official, Lynn Transtrom sits on that board, plumbers, electricians, builders.
So people who have a good familiarity with it?
The order, I don't think it's, I think it's by resolution. I'm not certain. It might be by ordinance, but it definitely calls out different trades that have to sit on. It's just not anybody out there that has no idea what construction is.
That's good to know for the people that are, that may have an appeal one day, that they're going before a body that has the knowledge to make those decisions.
Yes, we have, we have great individuals that serve on our board. And I'm very grateful for their willingness to serve on this. And it's a very important board. Like I said, it doesn't get utilized that often, but it's a very, very important board.
Councilmember Nichols.
Sure, yeah, this isn't really a Board of Appeals question, but I noticed in one of the reports that your department sent out to the council, we had a couple pretty large building permits purchased. I was just wondering if you could talk about that a little bit and give that a little plug.
Highland High School's building permit went out for their new addition. And just due to the size of that, the cost of that project, our commercial fees are based off evaluation, so that permit was quite substantial. Like Council President Cheetham said here during the parks, that we had the groundbreaking of the MEK. That was also another good one. Portnife Valley Soccer is, they've emailed us their plans, just kind of as an intermediate review before the review process. They're in the process of reviewing that. And then we have townhouses being proposed, like they're going out, like we've never seen, it's unprecedented. If everything gets built this year, if we make it through the planning stages, from what we've had during our site plan, we're estimating made anywhere between 750 and 1,000 units to be built for townhouses, which is going to keep us busy.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
One more, if I may.
Cheetham.
Are the, are the issues then that the Construction Board of Appeals and Review take up, are they complaint-driven? Are they, do they come from your building inspectors or are they appeals from contractors to existing code?
It's contractors or homeowners that doesn't, that wouldn't agree with the decision, neither on inspection or issuance of a permit. Say, like, the last one that we had was, they wanted to encroach on a fence and they didn't like our standard on our fence. So that was that appeal. So we met with the code board, code board agreed with our stance that no, your proposed fence doesn't meet our guidelines of our fence ordinance, came before council, and that was upheld.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols.
So let's say that a homeowner had a complaint against a contractor. Would that be something that this board would review?
No, that would not. That would be more of a civil issue. We do have bond requirements for our contractors, so they would be, you could violate that bond complaint and they could, they can, themselves could go after that bond if it was a performance issue. But that would be more of a civil issue that we don't get involved with.
Got it, thank you.
Council President Lyric.
I was just curious, now that you brought it up about the, that kind of situation where there's a bond issue, and how that gets resolved. I mean, I know when a homeowner has an issue with a contractor, that's a civil issue and they need to deal with each other on that and go through the court system. But if the contractor, like if there was some problem with their bond, how does that get?
So they have to do a demand letter. The bond companies require a demand letter. They always try to work it out first, but we've had, have, we've had, had a couple of contractors here within the last year or two that have lost their bond, their bond's been paid. And so they, they send out letter, a demand letter to say, hey, you need to fix this issue if they refuse to fix it. And it supports that that bond is deemed to be paid, then it gets paid out, and then that contractor can't work in the city until they get a new bond.
And does that go before this?
No, it doesn't.
Board? Okay.
Councilmember Cheetham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it time perhaps we raised our bond limits with the inflationary cost of construction, materials, labor? Is that keeping up and is it satisfying those issues that arise when a bond comes up?
I mean, yes, we could, we could raise our bond limit. It's hard to say. I mean, if you, if you have a guy that's just doing a bathroom remodel or a fence and they have a bond claim, our bond is sufficient to do that? If it's, you know, somebody building a half a million dollar house or more now, because the homes costs have gone up, we're probably low. The problem that we've seen now is, we had a contractor that had multiple people in line for his bond, and it was a roofing company, and the first person exhausted the bond, and then there's nothing left for everybody else. And it's unfortunate, but...
Can I follow up?
I guess, let me ask real quick and then, yes, you may. Is our bond requirements, are they like equitable to the rest of the state, the cities in the state, or are they low or are they high?
We're one of the few cities that require a bond because we require licensing. So like, most of the jurisdictions throughout the state of Idaho only require the contractor licensing, which is a liability insurance, so they don't have that option for the bond. So that's just one of the few things that we offer as the city of Pocatello through our licensing program, is the requirement of the bond.
Okay, sorry, Councilmember Cheetham.
Then let me ask this two different ways. Do we require licensing also and is there a state licensing and bonding authority for those communities that don't have a municipal program?
So the state requires their contractor registration, their licensing, and then the city of Pocatello has our own licensing requirements for the contractor to be licensed to do work.
Is, I guess, is the state program comparable to what we have?
In my opinion, no, because of our bonding requirements.
So what we have is better?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols.
What is the face amount of the required bond?
I believe it's $10,000, but I'd have to follow up on that for you.
All right. And that's regardless of whether it's somebody doing a bathroom or a half a million dollar house, it's a $10,000 bond?
I think it varies, but I'd have to follow up on that. So we have three licensing. We have a Class B, which is the home remodelers, subcontractors, an A2 license, which is for residential housing, and an A1 for commercial. I believe that bond varies between the licenses, but I'd have to follow up on that for you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Other questions, council? All right. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number three is the CDBG Advisory Committee update. Representatives from the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Advisory Committee will be in attendance to discuss the committee's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Christine Howe and I'm the grants manager and I serve as the staff liaison for the CDBG Advisory Committee. And CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant, but I think you all are very familiar with that acronym by now.
Heather Dislakun, I am CDBG chairperson.
So we'd like to just provide you with an overview of what the advisory committee does and then go into some of our achievements for the program year and what we're looking forward to for the next program year. So just for your information, the advisory committee is composed of seven members. The city has local neighborhood associations, and so by our resolution, four of those members must live in the designated target neighborhoods, which are outlined in the graphic here. And we are also able to have three members who can live outside of those target areas. And our members serve up to three-year terms. At this time, we have a full committee, which is, I think, the first time since I've been with the city, so we're really excited about the interest and involvement from the public to serve on this committee. We have representatives from the Mountain View neighborhood, Old Town, Alameda and Bonneville neighborhoods, and then three representatives from outside of those neighborhoods. And so the committee, the big amount of their work takes place sort of at the end of summer and fall, and I'll go into that in a couple slides, but they review and vote on our subrecipient applications for our CDBG funds. They also assist with creating our five-year plan, which helps guide how that funding's going to be allocated. They assist with public hearings on our community needs when we're creating our annual action plan, which is our strategic plan for each year. The committee also provides project and plan oversight throughout the year and assists with our Fair Housing Act education. So the CDBG program, Pocatello is what's called an entitlement community, so we get these funds through a formula from HUD every year as it's budgeted through the federal government. And our program's guided by, as I mentioned, our five-year plan, and we're allowed to spend the funds in the listed eligible project categories. The majority of our funding goes into housing, based on the community's needs. We also provide a substantial amount of funding for public infrastructure, which are things like our sidewalk program. We have funding for public facilities and public services. And then finally, we have some funding to allow for the administration and planning, which is really the staff that help administer this program. So our current comp plan runs through what's called our program year 2026, so it will expire at the end of March of 2027, which means we are getting prepared to do our next round of consolidated plan planning, to put that together next summer in 2026. But as I mentioned, the bulk of the CDBG advisory committee's work really takes place during the creation of our annual strategic plan. So that plan needs to be submitted to HUD in February. I think you all recall when I came before you then for that approval at the end of January. But we start that process in the summer. And so we have a technical assistance meeting, usually at the end of August or early September, where we talk about the CDBG funding available for our nonprofits to apply for. And then we conduct an application process, and our advisory committee is really instrumental in reviewing those applications and ensuring that the applicants and their recommendation really meets the goals of the CDBG program, is going to provide the most community benefit. We'll then have a public hearing on that funding recommendation and bring that before city council. And then we submit that plan to HUD. I think every year I come with this slide and we're here, we are here, is always in this spot. And that's typically because we do not get our federal entitlement allocation until, you know, after the program year starts. Our program year starts on April 1st, but the federal government's usually quite delayed in issuing that. This year, especially delayed. But we did receive notification that potentially they'll have that number by May 15th, so that's what I'm hoping for on when we'll know what that entitlement number is, so.
Council President Lyric.
I was just wondering, well, I have two questions, but would it make sense to have your update come like in August or September or something so that we can move?
It might, you know, actually, you know, May or June might be the best time because then we've concluded the program year, gotten all the data from our subrecipients and can report out, and likely would have the number by then. But this, you know, our program year, because it's April to... But this, you know, our program year, because it's April to March and doesn't quite align with the federal calendar year or the city's calendar year.
Yeah.
We're able to provide a pretty good update to you all and let you know where we've spent out. But yeah, we, we're happy to present in whichever month makes the most sense.
I have one more question is, and I know when you brought the plan to us, we asked these questions, but because it's HUD funding, can you say a little bit, and maybe you were planning to, if you are, just let me know. But where does that funding stand? Like, are we sure that we're getting it or how, how are things looking?
Sure. So for fiscal year '25, federal budget, they did approve basically level funding again. And that's what it's been the last five years. When they do level fund, that does result in a reduction just because there's maybe more entitlements that come on or the way they do the formula is adjusted slightly. So we, I'll go into kind of the numbers we have planned for program year '25, but we're anticipating a reduction and we plan for that in our action plan when we bring it before you. For fiscal year '26, it's unknown. There is numerous communications out there about reducing or completely eliminating the CDBG program. So we will await that information and then, you know, adjust accordingly. So we are still planning as if there will be a program year '26 for CDBG, specifically because we would have that consolidated plan requirement to do that, to have that in place. So we're going to, I guess, plan, plan as we can and then adjust accordingly.
What happens? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to mention anything about the review process with the Advisory Committee?
You know, most of our year is, we're in a holding pattern, just waiting. Like Christine said, we're, we're always trying to look ahead as to, you know, what that adjustment is going to be. And so, you know, sometimes if we're a little bit off, sometimes we have to make some adjustments mid-year. But it's our, where the rubber meets the road for us is October, November, well, really November, December. And that's the best part because we get to see the providers come in, give their presentations here about what they're doing in the community. It's always challenging to make those recommendations to you. Public services is, you know, we're capped. Don't recall what the percentage is right now, but we're always capped. And so when they come in with those asks, we have to make adjustments. But it's, we have a process down now. We have a full committee, which I, like Christine said, I think this is the first time since I've served that we had people representing each of the, each of the neighborhoods. So I'm excited for this coming year.
Good. Yes, Councilmember Paulson.
I'm on the board of the Free Clinic now and they, we, they wanted to offer a sincere thank you for the money that was allocated to them. And I will send you guys an email and City Council. They would like to offer a tour so you can see what's going on. So I'll email you.
Great.
Right, thank you.
So here's just an overview of some of the types of projects we funded in program year '24. As mentioned, the funding was a reduction from the previous year, but we were still able to receive an award of just over $375,000 and allocated toward these various categories. As Heather mentioned, our public services are kind of our highest demand category, apart from housing through the renewal program. But we are capped, the cap is 15% of the entitlement. So it ends up being roughly between $50,000 and $60,000. But we usually receive asks about twice that. So some of these numbers in a little more detail, you can see we were able to fund our Lead Safe and Healthy Homes Grant match. And so by leveraging CDBG, we were able to receive about 2.6 million through the lead program. And similarly, our renewal grant and loan program is always almost oversubscribed. So we were able this year to do 21 grant projects. A lot of those are on our, our manufactured houses in the community because they aren't eligible for other types of financing to help with some of these home repairs. We also closed on two CDBG loans, which are 0% interest, often fully deferred loans for folks who can't also receive conventional financing and allows us to do two sewer line replacements for those homes. So it helps sustain and maintain our affordable housing stock. Affordable in the sense that we have low and moderate income folks living there, but also kind of a lowercase a affordable in that it's maintaining the housing stock that are often first-time home buyer purchases or for folks aging in place. For public services, as mentioned, we were able to fund over 63,000 in assistance to our local agencies, which included case management services through Aid for Friends. They also do a PRT ticket program so folks can get to appointments or interviews and things from the homeless shelter. The Boys and Girls Club runs an after-school program and they were able to do that at two sites this year. New Day Products provides case management services to their employees who are disabled adults. And the Free Clinic, as mentioned by Councilmember Paulson, receives funding for dental services program. And St. Vincent de Paul provides emergency assistance through their social services program for folks for things like an emergency bill that needs to be paid or rental assistance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Just a quick question, and I don't think you've said this, but the Lead Safe and Healthy Homes? That program, how much, how many years do we have left?
We're in the final year. Technically, the program ends May 1st, but we've submitted for an extension, which is just in its final review phase from HUD. So we're anticipating an extension of a year on that one.
Okay.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yep, to, to follow up on that for the benefit of people that are watching here, could you explain what that program is, what it accomplishes and how people would apply for it?
Yeah, absolutely. So we were able to receive discretionary grant funding, so a competitive grant, to be able to go to qualifying homes that have lead-based paint. And we can mitigate or abate that lead-based paint hazard. And in addition, we got what's called healthy home supplemental funding. So if there's a, another health issue in the home, such as mold, radon, asbestos, any weatherization needs to help prevent water infiltration, we can address those through the supplemental funding. So we've been able to do both the paint mitigation to help with any health impacts that may have on children under the age of six, as well as the healthy homes component to ensure that, again, we're maintaining the housing stock and keeping it safe, livable condition. And folks can just reach out to the planning office and apply. We have some program requirements based on income and then we have a prioritization for families with children under the age of six. So if you're interested in applying, it's, it's a full grant program. And often we'll go into a home and do a risk assessment to see if there's lead-based paint as well. And maybe it will come back without the lead paint, so we can do that. So if your house is built before 1978 and you're not sure, we can even assess that to, to make sure. And once the program's complete, you have kind of a clean bill of health for your house. So we encourage folks to reach out and apply.
And just as a follow-up on that, and subject to meeting the qualifications, this can be done at no cost to the homeowner, is that correct?
Yep, it's a fully grant-funded program. We've even done things where there's been really dangerous electrical. So we've been able to mitigate the lead paint and then update folks, you know, electrical from old knob and tube that's a fire hazard to, to current day standards and do, you know, code updates like that. So it's a really great program where you can make sure that the, the homes are, are safe to live in. So if you're on the fence and thinking about applying, just reach out. And we have funding available and it's all grant-funded, so there's no cost to the homeowner.
Great program. I encourage people to utilize it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, we've got one down here, Councilmember Mingham.
With the public services that we're assisting, I imagine there's applications, right, that they have to, and they present to you. Do you see an increase in applications?
We typically get around 12 agencies that apply. It's, because it's CDBG, there is kind of a, a heavy lift in terms of main federal requirements. So often if there's an agency that's interested, who's maybe not applied before, they'll call our office and we'll provide them some guidance in what the requirements would be. So that does weed out a few agencies. And some of our agencies that have been recurring every year, they may take a year off. For example, Neighbor Works didn't apply this year, but they're kind of, they've been applying in the past years. We're very upfront during our technical assistance meeting with how much funding is available. So a few years ago, Salvation Army submitted an application, saw that the funding was oversubscribed and opted to pull it out because they could find other funding sources. So we have that technical assistance meeting and do outreach to close to 100 agencies. We typically have about 20 come to the meeting and then have about, you know, 12 apply at the end of the day. And we, as Heather mentioned, the, the committee reviews the applications in depth. We have a scoring tool. And then in these years, we've tried to give everyone some funding, even though it may be half of what they've asked for.
So I'll follow up with that. Okay. So another topic with the Lead Safe and Healthy Homes, do you see an increase on applications or interest in that also or?
In the past nine months, we've definitely seen an increase. And that's due to a lot of the outreach that our outreach coordinator's been doing. And so I think as word gets out, folks are more apt to apply. A lot of our clients are neighbors of other clients or, or had a friend that went through the program and then they recommended by word of mouth. It's a HUD program, so it is, it is a process, but the staff's really good at working with the clients to try to get them approved. We get a lot of inquiries, but folks are either just over the income limit, so they can't qualify or they don't have a child under the age of six. So we actually have a lot of older client, you know, folks who are older, who are on fixed incomes that could really use the services, but they just aren't eligible because of that under six-child requirement. I wish they would kind of lift those restrictions a little because we could do a lot more houses. But it's, it's part of the HUD requirement, so we're kind of constrained.
Yeah, thank you.
Council President.
Thank you. Actually, the last thing that you said was what I wanted to talk about. I agree with Councilmember Nichols to encourage people to apply. And I would say, like, if you're an older person and maybe have grandkids or somebody who looks after neighborhood kids after school and you think you don't meet that requirement, you may actually meet it because if you have kids spending time in your home. So if somebody thinks they don't meet the requirements and then doesn't even apply or come in and talk to you, they should because maybe they will meet them, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we have kind of a waitlist. So essentially, every one in every 10 single-family homes, we can, we can do without meeting the child requirement. So if you're on the fence and you think you might qualify or not, reach out. We can at least do that inspection and then get you on the waitlist. And then maybe every 10th home, you'll come up. So absolutely, and there's a visiting child rule.
Yeah.
It's a little complicated, but definitely reach out.
But it might move you up the list or, or, or make you go from not, not meeting the requirements to actually meeting them. I had a friend who thought that she didn't meet the requirements when she read them and so didn't even come in and, and talk to you or apply. But she has her grandkids at her house regularly. So it really changed her situation in terms of meeting those requirements, so, yeah.
Councilmember Mingham.
Two things, so I can borrow someone's kid.
I already asked.
So we trust the clients when they say that.
No, Corey, you're loaning me two of yours.
Yeah, you borrow mine. Just kidding. So how, how do we, like, within that, I, that thought process, right? So I go and get Josh's kid and I'm like, hey, come over and, you know, now this is my application. How, how do we verify that that child actually lives there or is spending adequate amount of time at that?
We ask for supporting documentation, things like birth certificates. And they do sign on the application that if they're, they're lying and they're found to be lying, then they'd be liable for paying it back. But people are quite honest and.
Really are worried about this?
No, not really. People are, it's a thought.
Are you kidding? People mistake my kid as his all the time. They say we look the exact same.
I can see that.
Same last name.
Guys look like twins, but we think most people are honest.
Well, I would imagine.
We, we trust most people.
So in all seriousness, kinda, so, no, I'm being serious this time. So let's say rentals, right? Do we cover anything for rentals? Because there are some older homes that are converted into, you know, multifamily.
Yeah, that's a great, great point. We do rentals. Typically, it has to be four units or fewer. And we would encourage landlords to reach out to us, especially when they're having turnover of units, because that's a great time for us to come in and do the lead paint mitigation. If there is a tenant in the rental unit, they have to just meet the income requirements, not the child under six requirement. So rentals is, it's been tough for us to get into that market because often it's like a sort of more of a private landowner landlord that we've seen the rental program be successful, larger units and with more established kind of property management groups, that's been more of a challenge. But I think we've been trying to say during that turnover period, we'll come in and clear the units, get them painted, do any other fixes. It's just been tough to hit that market. So if anyone's listening, we'd love to come in and use the program there.
So for clarification, sorry.
You're fine.
For clarification, if it is multifamily, it's not at the income level of the owner, but at the renter?
Yes.
Okay.
For the tenants, yep.
Okay.
Councilmember Mansfield?
How do you make that determine if there's no tenant? So if you're between tenants, obviously you're not going to be on landlord's income.
Right, so that would be a vacant unit. And then they have to sign a document saying that they'll advertise the unit actively to low-income residents for three years after the program.
Got it. And is that determine, is that, is that based on what's like a fair market rate?
It's based on the HUD income standards.
Okay.
So we would provide them with those income standards. And then if they did get a tenant during that three-year time, we can verify that they met that. Or if they, you know, exhausted efforts to try to get that tenant, we could put that in the file as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We're going to let you continue on and try to get the questions minimized.
So our public facilities and infrastructure funding went toward our sidewalk program. We were able to do a neighborhood sidewalk program. And what was great about this year was we did the sidewalk grinding. So we were able to knock down lift, lifted sidewalks and things and avoid trip hazards to get access to our PRT bus stops, as well as install ADA ramps and then replace 1,700 feet of actual sidewalk. We partnered with PRT funds to, to stretch those dollars. And then Aid for Friends, we are, we were in the fifth year of that shelter acquisition funding. So that would have concluded the 250,000 of CDBG that we put toward that new shelter for the acquisition piece, which was, you know, the whole shelter was renovated a few years ago. So looking at PY '25, this is kind of the funding breakdown based on our anticipated HUD entitlement of 350,000 with our program income, which is what we received from some of our grants, from our, some of our loans of 25,000. And so you can see that the breakdown there based on the application process and how that has been presented to you in our strategic action plan. And yeah, any, if there's any additional comments or questions?
Can't even believe you pulled that slide up, quite frankly. Questions, council? Okay, super.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. With that, we'll move to agenda item number four is the Library Board of Trustees update. Representatives from the Library Board of Trustees will be in attendance to discuss the board's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Please.
Off the top, do I get a benefit from borrowing kids at the library?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Thank you.
One of our new programs.
Oh, wait. Thank you.
We've got seven to choose from.
And I would like to, before we get started with this, thank you very much for hanging in there and staying with us. I recognize you have a real job to get to and you probably came for a half hour and we're almost 11 o'clock. So I appreciate your patience with us. Thank you.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Excuse me. I am Sandra.
I am Sandra Shropshire, and the board chair for Marshall Public Library. And beside me is Eric Suisse, as you may know, who is the library director. Before I start on this little handout, I want to share some items that you might not know or you might not be familiar with about the composition of the board and what we've, how we function. We are a five-member board. We are mayoral appointees and we serve five-year terms. We meet, tend to meet monthly. Occasionally, we will skip a meeting if it seems warranted, but it's very rarely. Our primary function is to oversee the activities of the library and to set policy. And one in particular, this, I'll start in on this handout. One particular policy that hit us this past year was a policy to, so that we would be in compliance with the Children's School and Library Protection Act. As you may recall, went into effect in July of '24. So we actually anticipated its enactment and had a policy ready when the year changed over. And to my knowledge, we have had, seen no responses to that. We've had no complaints about books that offended someone. So knock on wood, I guess. Another accomplishment this year was the elevator was successfully installed and passed inspection after a painful extended wait. And also, the library joined in with the League of Women Voters to run a voter registration act earlier this fall. I list for you on this next section, some of the annual events that occur at the library that naturally will be timed by the time of year, like summer reading program. I do this to point out that the people in the library are busy year-round and they're serving citizens of Pocatello. Our mayor's million-minute marathon encouraged nearly 3,000 students to read 1.8 million minutes. And I'm always happy to report on that program. That's a delight for me to, for any efforts to encourage reading in children.
I might just add right there, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I might just add right there, we were, we have a great corporate partner in Lookout Credit Union. Yesterday, we went and delivered the checks and for the winning schools for the most participation and the most, most number of minutes read per student and then the most read as a school. And I'll tell you, we've got some great elementary schools out there and some great youth. It was really exciting. It was a lot of fun to be able to see those kids excited about this great big check that's out there that they're like, wow, their eyes are big and it's just really neat. And so thank you for supporting that and helping make that happen. That was really, really truly is a fun and it's a great program. I might add, Councilmember Cheatham was, when we started, was actually still employed. And I went to him and I couldn't get it all the way out before he said, yes, we're all in, we would happily do this. And so he was working, at the time it was ISU Credit Union. And so it's neat to see partners that just jump in when there's something great for youth. And I think Councilmember Cheatham started that, that at Lookout Credit Union, and that's a legacy I think he helped set up there, so.
I think there's nothing more important in education than literacy.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Agreed. And so it's neat to have corporations, a library in the city and all of the school district working together with this. So thank you very much. A few years, we've hit over 2 million. So we're thinking, do we need to make this a 2 million-minute read? But this year, we were, we were close and so it's really exciting.
Maybe just add an ass.
There you go.
Millions.
Millions.
There you go. But there are a number of programs that are enacted annually at the library, as you can see, that reach out to the community and give them reasons to participate and to feel and to build a sense of community beyond reading, which you can see. Also, I'd like to point out that the library's Jackie Wood received the 2024 Human and Civil Rights Award from the city for her work for the multicultural storytimes, which is, which they're quite proud of. Also, I list for you the policies that we reviewed and updated this year, in the year that occurred since I was last here in May. And finally, on the back are some selected statistics. In a lot of areas, the statistics are slightly down for the same time period a year ago. However, the ones that are up are really interesting to me. That is the eBooks, eBook checkouts and public internet use, which, which is just something very interesting to me, just point that out. I will conclude with those comments and offer myself up for any questions.
Council, questions, Councilmember Cheatham.
Do you have a number on the number of persons who use the library, either have cards or use other services, individuals?
Yes, we do. I didn't include it here.
We do, and currently, we're about 85% of citizens of Pocatello have a life, an active library card. That compares to a national average of 55 to 60. So we're well above that. The library is heavily supported by the community and to great effect, I think.
Okay. Council President Lyrd.
Thank you. I really have more of a comment than a question, but I appreciate our library and all the work they do and just want to emphasize, and you've kind of suggested this with your comments, but that the library is so much more than like a book depository or a place where you get books and it's a community center. And the numbers on internet usage, things like that, really show that it's a place where people can go to get all kinds of different services and access to things they may not have at home and everything. So I think it's really central to any community. And the fact that we have 85% participation speaks volumes. I mean, people get those cards, but it may not be all they're going there for. So thank you for all you do for the library, but also to be a center of the community and provide all these other services as well.
So to follow up on Linda's comment there, the fact that we have 85% usage is just incredible, but I just did some quick arithmetic here. It looks like we checked out 220,000 items in a year. That just seems incredible to me.
We're pissed at.
What's that?
We don't run out of things to do.
Right.
When you talk about other things besides books, I think that's really important and I routinely refer to us as a community center. There are job computers, you know, help people get employment. Several meeting spaces where people can get together to go over various community issues or to work. Anything from, you know, a knitting club or a chess club to, you know, reading groups and various other things, but there's so many different things that we use that for.
The new steam room.
Yeah, the steam room that we've got right now, the Ashram Yoast Steam Center, is doing some really amazing things. Kids are learning and kids and adults are learning how to use 3D printers and how to use a laser cutter and the various other things. So there's so many more things. Books are the mainstay still, whether it's electronic or paper, but we really, really try to present ourselves as a community center and that's been successful.
Definitely a community asset, so thank you so much for what you do and thank you for your time. I apologize, you've been here a lot longer than you anticipated today. I will, I will tell you, all of my kids, wherever they go, the first place they, first thing they do is go get a library card. And then all of my grandkids all have library cards regardless of where they are and where they live. And so it was something, love for libraries started right here in Pocatello for my kids and for, and my grandkids, and they just carry that on. So thank you. Libraries are definitely an important resource for a community, so thank you very much. With that, we will move to agenda item number six is U.S. Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistance, RTA Pilot Program, Grant Application Planning and Development Services. Planning and Development Services staff will be present to inform the council of a grant opportunity through the U.S. Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistance, RTA Pilot Program in the amount of $500,000 with no required match. The grant would provide necessary funding for completion of a municipal service impact analysis. If approved, ratification of the application will, of the application and acceptance of the grant, if awarded, will be considered at the April 17, 2025 regular council meeting. Council, we don't typically bring this kind of things in front of you at a work session. However, we felt like it was important because the application, we found out about it late and the application needs to be turned in on April 16.
Well, 17th at 3:00 p.m.
17th at 3:00 p.m. So 17th at 3:00 p.m. And so I just wanted to make sure that you were informed that we would see a ratification of a grant. We almost had enough time to get it in front of you before, but we don't. And so I wanted to make sure if you were feeling okay about it after the presentation, then we will apply for it. If you're, if I'm kind of getting the vibe that you're not feeling okay about it, then we're not going to apply. So Christine.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As the mayor mentioned, we are up against a, an unfortunate East Coast timeline for submission of this grant application. DOT announced funding through their Rural and Tribal Assistance Program, which they've had in past years, but the funding was a little unknown until they opened it on March 18th. With that timeline, to get it before you at the April 3 meeting, I would have had to have known about it on March 11th. Unfortunately, don't have that much foresight. And so we, we tried to stick to as normal of an application process as we normally would with our internal review and putting this together. So legal did complete their review and they had no objections to the application moving forward before you. What this would do would provide us with funding to complete a feasibility and impact analysis for the proposed crest development and how that would impact our municipal facilities and infrastructure as that development moves forward. So I brought, you know, Brent up here in case you have questions about that, but there will be an impact to municipal services if that development comes forward. So we want to be able to do as much planning as possible and DOT provides funding for us to look at that future impact analysis, how that would affect our utilities, our municipal infrastructure such as water and sewer and any roads and then the buildup that would be needed. And then this would put us in a good position to apply for potential infrastructure grant funding, such as we got for the North Main Street and Craft Road intersection. There's a similar DOT program where we would be poised to apply for that and help alleviate the cost of some of that municipal infrastructure build out once we have that impact analysis and the preliminary engineering completed. So we're trying to be proactive. We know the development hopefully is moving imminently. We debated waiting a year, but I think with the timing, it makes sense to try to jump on this opportunity now. The awards are on a rolling basis, so we do want to submit by that deadline so that they can award as they have funding available. And so with that, we can probably answer any additional questions.
Councilmember Cheatham and then Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any kicks in this program because the property lies in Power County and the city of Pocatello overlaps, if you will?
It would be on the municipal-owned land, so it would be okay for us to do this grant work there and do the infrastructure improvements there through those other grant programs mentioned.
Does Power County need to be aware of this application?
We decided to apply as a single entity. You can do a multiple entity application, but it requires MOUs and other documents. So we will let them know if we do get this and involve them in the impact analysis and process, same with Danic County most likely. But because of the application timeline, we decided to do it as just city of Pocatello, especially where we'll be responsible for the build out and maintenance of any of that infrastructure.
Thank you.
I think a lot of this will be water, sewer, things like that, which is city-related anyway, more than Power County, so.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was thinking. Councilmember Nichols and then Councilmember Mingham.
Sure. So this would be relative to municipal services impact exclusively limited to the crest development?
No, it wouldn't be exclusively, exclusively limited to the crest development. This is mostly for the airport as a whole.
I'm sorry, who are you?
I'm sorry. Brent McLean, Planning and Development Services Director. Sorry, man.
It's good to meet you.
Good to meet you. So the, this feasibility study, obviously, the crest development is in the forefront of our minds, but this needs to be done for the entire airport and all the land outside of the crest development as well. So we need to really address the infrastructure needs for the entirety of the city-owned property out there.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Mingham.
So you had mentioned, Ms. Christine, you had mentioned the idea of possibly waiting a year to apply, but you felt it was appropriate to just hurry and do it. So with that, is there a holding timeframe? If we are awarded these monies, is there a holding timeframe on how soon you have to expense this money or can we hold on to it for a year? Do we have to hurry and get this done? Is there a match? I didn't see anything in here specifically for a match for the city. The others are my two questions.
Sure. So there is no match for this. It would be just direct grant funds to do the work. And anticipated award is June and we've built in an 18-month project period. And so typically, they allow up to three years on the period of performance. If we felt we had to extend that, we would negotiate that after the award with DOT. But I think we're comfortable with the 18 months. And the other part of not waiting until next year is the funding could potentially not be available again next year.
Councilmember Mansfield.
Do you need a formal motion for this?
No, I, we're not looking for really any motion. I, I don't really want to make motions here. I just want to feel from.
I know we generally don't, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, we can, we'll ratify this next week. It'll just be as a ratification and so.
Okay. Thumbs up from me then.
Okay, we've got, we've got a bunch of thumbs up, but we have a question, so settle down there, Christine, don't get too excited. Yeah, this.
Does this study encompass non-aerospace land out there then, or does it also include the airspace property?
So Brent would know the project area best.
It focuses on the non-aerospace area, but it, if the infrastructure needs out there would, I mean, there's obviously, especially water needs out on the airspace where you have fire suppression needs and things like that, that will have to come into play because it's a singular system. And so all of those needs would have to be included in whatever analysis we can achieve, get from, from this study. So now, obviously, there's not a lot of need for sewer services out on those, those airspaces, but it will take into account the airport itself because it all feeds into the same system.
Well, we're in the process of planning a lot of hangers out there, and so I would assume that would be affected or at least be considered in this.
That was my next point I was going to ask about is whether this, there has been a lot of demand for hangers and I expect a development like this will probably bring more private aircraft to our airfield out there. So is that part of the plan? So is that part of the plan where we dribble over onto the airspace property?
So this grant is only going to cover the infrastructure needs. The airport does have their master plan that addresses a lot of those hangar needs and the airport growth. And those plans would feed into this study to help inform it.
So if there were restrooms or other kind of facilities, plan for the airspace area, then that would feed into the infrastructure needs of this?
Yes, it will. Because it all ties back to the same system. And so all of it will have to be addressed.
Okay. Councilmember Mankam.
Looking at the name of the grant where it says Tribal Assistance Pilot Program, does this take into account our proximity to the Fort Hall area?
For this particular application, we qualify under the rural designation, so we did not need to qualify as a tribal. But that, they provide funding for both rural communities and tribal.
Okay.
Okay. Super. Okay, council, you're, thank you, by the way. Becky, thanks. You were very helpful today. A lot to add to the conversation. But thank you very much. It sounds like, go ahead, and let's get this application in. Council, you'll see this in front of you as a ratification. At that time, if the vote is no, then we'll reach out and pull the application back. But we'll be ratifying that coming, this next coming week. So thank you.
Thank you.
Council, the next agenda item is council advisory board updates. I know that I counseled it last month, but I'm going to do the same thing again this month in interest of time and being able to move into an executive session. And so I hope that's okay with everybody on the council, but I think that would be best to do that. So with that, we are adjourned from this meeting. And I would look at moving into, I would like to move into the special city council meeting.